This conference will now be recorded.
Okay.
I'd like to call to order the regular May 5, 2025 council meeting to order at 6:31 PM. All rise for the pleasure of leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to prove the agenda is written?
So moved.
Mayor.
So moved by Counselor Webb, is your second?
No, second.
Seconded by Counselor Weller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Motion carried. We're going to move right into a public hearing. Before I open it up, the public hearing is now open for the purpose of closing out a community development block grant from the Oregon Business Development Department and to obtain citizens' views about the project and to take comments about the local government's performance. The procedure I would like to take tonight is in this manner. I'll read the disclosure statement, hear the staff report, hear public testimony, close the hearing, and the city council will deliberate. So I think I'll begin this public hearing at 6:32 PM on May 5, 2025. Ladies and gentlemen, I call this hearing to order. My name is Mayor Rick Hobart. I am the chairman of the City Council for Vernonia. Our role is to conduct public hearings and to make decisions about matters in Vernonia. Members of the City Council are to be unbiased. Before the start of the hearing, I will ask the members of the City Council whether they have any potential conflicts, such as family, financial or business relationship with regard to the land in question. If such a potential conflict exists, I will ask whether the council member in question believes he or she is without actual bias or whether he or she would like to step down during the case review. A copy of the rules, a procedure for the hearing, the agenda for today's hearing, and copies of the staff report are available upon request. Any person with an interest in today's agenda item may offer relevant oral and/or written testimony, but please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. Please make sure your testimony is relevant to applicable standards for the item in question. Please do not repeat testimony offered by yourself or earlier witnesses. If I think your testimony is irrelevant or repetitious, I may interrupt and ask you to continue with another subject. Demonstrations from the audience are prohibited. Please refrain from them. Comments from the audience will not be part of the record. Any questions? That concludes the introduction. Does any city council member wish to declare any potential conflict of interest?
So as is with citywide rate increases or decreases, you do not have to state a conflict of interest. I had to look.
No, so then the staff will proceed with the summary of their report.
So this is the point in the hearing where we read the public notice, which contains all the elements that are required for closing out the grant. So the city of Vernonia is completing a sewer system repair and improvement project funded with the Community Development Block Grant Funds from the Oregon Business Development Department. The location of this project was 1001 Bridge Street, Vernonia, Oregon 97064. It is estimated that the project has benefited at least 2,696 persons, of whom 54.8% are low or moderate income. The project addressed undersized sanitary sewer pipes, addressed sanitary overflow issue at Klatzup Street manhole, addressed system-wide capacity with a new pump station, and removed fish passage barriers on the Rock Creek and Bear Creek. The public hearing will be held by the City Council at 6:30 on May 5, 2025, at City Hall, 1001 Bridge Street, Vernonia, Oregon 97064. The purpose of the hearing is for the City Council to obtain citizen views about the project and to make comments about the local government's performance. Written comments are also welcome and must be received by May 2 at 1001 Bridge Street, Vernonia, Oregon 97064. Both oral and written comments will be reviewed by the City Council. The location of the hearing is accessible to this table. Please let Stephanie Borst at 503-429-5291, extension 105, know if you need any special accommodations to attend or participate in this hearing. More information about the Oregon Community Development Block Grant Program and the project is available for public review at City Hall, 1001 Bridge Street, Vernonia, Oregon 97064 during regular office hours. Advance notice is requested.
Thank you, Josette. Does the council have any questions for staff? Okay, if not, it's time for public testimony. Does any member of the public wish to speak or present testimony on this agenda item? Sure.
Sheila Parent. First off, I would just like to express my support for the project and my appreciation for the city staff work. I understand the need for the project and its benefits that it provides. As full disclosure, I am a member of the Public Works Committee, was invited and attended the regular project construction meetings with the city staff, the contractor, Public Works crews, and the city's engineering representative, but not here today as a Public Works Committee representative, but as a Vernonia residence and a utility ratepayer. The issue that I wanted to bring up was the process that was followed that led to the acceptance of a bid for the work that exceeded the engineer's estimate by nearly $1 million and exceeded the funds that were allocated. After the construction was completed, the funding shortfall has decided to be placed on us ratepayers in the form of a 30-year loan that increases our water and sewer bills. I understand that the timing of the project was tricky, that the water work was only allowed in the small window of time, but the work was not an emergency. So rather than me just coming here and complaining about things, I would like to give you three suggestions to put forward, maybe for the future. I would suggest that prior to moving underfunded projects forward and committing us to another 30-year debt, that other funding options could be discussed in an open public forum, especially when funding shortfalls are known prior to construction, which was as the case in this project, even if it would cause a delay in the construction. The second item would be to cap the level of loan rates that can be applied to our bills. Currently, we pay about $27 a month for loans. It would be proposed to be over $32 a month with this new loan. The three outstanding loans that remain are to be paid over a period between seven and 32 years. I would just like to see us put a limit on how many of these we should carry. Lastly, I would suggest that we spend additional sewer facility reserves and maybe use those to pay down the principal on this loan now or to use it in the future as match monies for additional grants. According to the budget documents, the sewer facilities, and I'm quoting, the sewer facilities reserve was created to set aside funds to maintain the facility and help eliminate the need, help eliminate the possible need to assume any new debt in the future. So this gives us the permission to do that. That's it. Thanks for the opportunity and thanks for talking.
Thank you. Okay, any other public testimony? Okay, well, thank you for your testimony. We will now close the public hearing and hear from the city council. So we'll close this hearing at 6:40 PM. Hearing closed. Counselors, do you have any questions for staff? Or wish to present any thoughts on the agenda item?
I think the contract was executed pretty proficiently. It was a big job and had some risk factors. There's always unknowns, so you start digging down that deep. But I think the contractor did very good work for the city. And I think we ended up with a pretty good product. I'm sure Sheila's concerned. It evolved on us, is what happened. We were anticipating the bid coming in, and then we already had commitments. So other parts of the project, again, we did for the watershed part. And so, yeah, you kind of get caught between the rock and the hard spot. If we'd have pulled back for a year, we might have just seen a year's worth of inflation and we might have lost some of the watershed money. So I don't know. I mean, I didn't like it either at first, but... And again, what citizens are paying about a third of this project?
Yeah, one-third is what...
One-third is the cost.
About taken the...
Total cost of the project, somewhere in there.
Yeah.
So we did pretty good. Get a two-to-one dollar match, that's pretty good. So, because we could have had to... Well, we had a problem we had to address. I mean, a couple of problems we addressed with this. The shortage of capacity in springboard and then our famous Palacio Fountain over here on weed that we were going to have to do something about. So tying the two together, I think they did a pretty good job of... Because I mean, one design was coming down through here and tearing up a lot more street than we did, so...
Yep.
Yeah, thought it went well.
Yeah, thank you, Dale. Go ahead, Dennis.
I have a question. You know what the difference in the cost of the bore section versus if they would have just dug it? No, I'm not saying that because I think the right thing was done. But do you know how much extra cost, off the top of your head, that?
It was about $50,000.
I was going to say 50.
50.
Was the change order. But along with that, some of the... It was 50 that the change order was because it probably would have been more, but some of the work didn't happen, so it came off. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
But the additional fee was around 50, more than the bid.
I would have guessed that it would have been more, so...
Yeah, what I'm saying is, is because the contractor didn't have to dig, those fees came off. Does that make sense? But it was still an additional, so maybe it was more like 72 would have been it had there not been the play back and forth of what didn't happen and what had to happen? Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yeah, because perhaps if they would have dug through there, it could have caused...
Yeah, we wouldn't have had the money had there been a failure.
Right.
We wouldn't... We would have been taking on way more debt to fix a failure in the state highway.
Well, I once again want to thank Josette and her staff in my glide of construction. You know, they were pushed against the deadline getting that damn out. I mean, that was right to the last minute, and we had a little bit of rain, and it was questionable whether they were going to get their work done. And, you know, and then the gravel pit closed up, and we were faced with possibly spending thousands of dollars trucking in gravel to finish the project. And luckily, Tony Hyde rearranged with Night Forever to keep that open until our project is done so we can utilize that rock. There was a lot in inflation caused with the price of steel went up, and so there were a lot of unforeseen things, but we handled it really nice. And, you know, I think it was a great project. It solved what we wanted to get done and provided for the future for future growth. So, thank you again. Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you, counselors.
I gave you all a copy of the script because at the end there is a sample motion, if you want to make it.
Sure. Everyone have a copy? Okay.
You going to entertain a motion?
I will at this time.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize the city administrator to move forward with completion of the sewer system repair and improvement project funded with Community Development Block Grant Funds from the Oregon Business Development Department.
So moved. Thank you, counselors, are second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counsel Norman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Motion carried. Congratulations. Okay, I don't have a mayor's report today. Are there any presentations tonight? None? Counselor committee meeting reports?
I didn't have one.
You got one, Dale?
I didn't have one.
Dennis?
I got a couple.
Yep.
There was at the Parks Committee meeting, there was question, a couple of questions on... Well, one was Anderson Park. There was concern with the park, if it's being taken care of adequately. There was question with that. The other concern was at Hawkins Park, apparently some large rocks are out in the field.
To this day?
That's what was stated.
Okay. Weird. I'll check that out.
Oh, yes, the bathrooms were... Apparently, the bathrooms were locked at Anderson Park. Is that...
At Anderson or Hawkins?
Anderson.
Only locked in the evenings, and then they're for campers only after like 7 o'clock, they shut the doors. Hawkins, I heard some scuttlebutt about, but that's always locked during the winter, during flood season, so April 15th, that's been cleaned up, and now it's on time locks again. So they should be open during the day to anybody. I don't know of them locking them during the day. They are locked at night to kind of ward off vandalism, and then campers have a code to get into them. But yeah, I don't know of that. Do you know of...
You know, they didn't specify the time.
Okay.
So maybe that should be asked.
And I'm coming to your meeting this month, so I can always talk to whoever reported that and see what happened, but they... They're on a code lock. So the campers, when they check in, get the code, we can readily change it, and then it's open during the day from like 8 to 8, and then at 8 o'clock it closes so that people don't sleep in there that need shelter and stuff like that. But I can check with your members when I go to the meeting.
Okay.
Was the Anderson Park, was the landscaping was the problem?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they... The week that that went grew up over around everything, they were in the hospital having a baby.
Oh.
And so, once I brought that to his attention, he mowed and did the upkeep when they got back home.
Sure.
Yeah. And then they did have a question. They wanted two updates that I sent out to the whole committee. I don't know if you... I think you were on that email. One was about the status of the lake campground, where we're at with that. And I said I gave them a synopsis, and I said I'd come to the meeting and discuss it. I forget what the other thing was, but I reported on that.
Did they raise question about that as far as it being in the floodway, the camp?
It's not in the floodway. It's in shaded XAE, so we will have to do some stuff with permeable areas, what can be impermeable, but that's about it. We aren't raising... We're using the material as it is to push it around and make our design. We're not bringing fill in, so it's not going to be a floodway issue that way. But I did give them a report and an email because I talked to Jamie, the secretary, and he had said we thought we were getting updates. I wasn't aware. No one asked me to come. So I said, "I'm sorry, what do you want updated?" So I'm going to be there at this one, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Okay, moving right along. Topics on the floor.
I have one.
Okay.
Crimmon?
Well, compared to what I've been hearing, this topic is pretty minor. I'm about on the corner of Knott Street, Highway 47. I know there's a fire hydrant there on the corner, and it's been out of service, I guess, for some time. It's been backed up, and I was just wondering if there's a plan to repair that, remove it, or what they're going to do. I talked to the fire department, I was just asking, they said they didn't have a clue to talk to the city.
I'll have to check in on that, Keith. I know we bagged ones that were not serviceable or that we knew were seized so that the fire department didn't try to open them during a fire. The law says we have to have a fire hydrant within 250 feet, and I know in our budget, I think we have two that are slated to be replaced. I'll have to get back to you on if that's one of them.
That's good.
Yeah.
Thank you, Keith. Okay, consent agenda for acceptance. Parks Committee meeting minutes for February 2025. Any discussion on it? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept those meeting minutes?
And make a motion to accept the park committee meetings for February 2025?
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counsel Weller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Keith and Brenda, don't feel like you have to state you don't want to, just so you know. Don't feel like we're keeping you hostage.
Consent agenda for approval. City Council meeting minutes for April 21, 2025. Come on, that wasn't too long ago.
I'll move to accept the consent agenda for approval.
So moved by Counsel Webb. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counsel Norman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Any unfinished business tonight? No? New business, staff report, auditor contract, page 6 through 12. Angie's not here tonight, but it's kind of self-explanatory, what's going on. How do you pronounce the new prospective auditor? Singer Wlak?
Singer Wlak?
Wlak?
Yeah, Wlak? Wait, Lewak, sorry. I pronounced it wrong.
Are they out of Portland?
Salem.
Oh, Salem, okay. I blame this on me. I gave such a good review last year. You spoke so highly of the work Angie did, they might have said, "Hey, we'll charge you more." But I don't think that's the case. I don't know why, but...
Well, their bid just kept incrementally going kind of astronomical for the actual work that they do. They didn't even come in person. We sent everything digitally last year, so we were like, "This is not making sense for the citizens."
Yeah.
"We need to push back and, you know, make some competition." And our firm came back with the same prices again. No... So they actually, weirdly, when we went to do the notice of intent to award, you know, kind of, "Hey, we might award this to these people," our firm was like, "We want to get started early." And Angie's like, "Did you not see we went out to bid? And like, how are you not paying attention to that? We're looking for a cheaper option." And they were like, "Okay, let us know if you want to help with the transition." And we're like, "No, we don't want to pay to help with the transition." So...
So it said quite a bit different. I mean, they didn't really give us any numbers that the other people were compared to these.
Yeah, we were in the $30,000s this year in 2024. And we'll have a single audit this time, so that... See that single audit? That's when you get a grant. They want to look specifically at that, and their single audit price was very similar, if not a little less, than the old people. And we knew we had one single audit, but then we won't have one every year. But yeah, the just the rising price was for the work we're seeing, we're like, "Why are we paying for like this much work, that much money of the citizens' money?" It didn't seem like it made sense.
So any questions?
I assume the contract...
Yes. We don't bring you anything the lawyer hasn't seen.
Yeah.
Looked good to me, but... All right.
Well, I'd like to make a motion in the form to authorize the city administrator to sign this contract with Singer Wlak. I'll move.
To have the city administrator sign the contract with Singer Lewak to city auditor.
So moved. Thank you, Counsel Webb. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Counsel Weller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, business from the departments. Welcome, Sergeant.
Thank you. So this is March stats. I was really hoping to be able to have April's to present to you guys tonight, but it looks like it'll have to be next. So April and May's. We're looking pretty good. Looks like for March, we did 114 premise checks and 31 traffic stops. We stayed out too much for a total of 271 calls for service for the month of March. Officer Schultz and myself completed digital evidence training with Clackamas County District Attorney's Office, which was presented by Senior Assistant Attorney General Kurt Miller from the DOJ, Department of Justice. Officer Ratliff participated in the school salmon auction, helping support our program. We bought quite a few things.
Decorations?
Yes. Decorated the office quite well.
We did have to teach him not to outbid the parents, though. We were like, "You're outbidding the parent who's trying to get that piece of their kid's art."
Yeah, myself and Officer Kendall and Eva participated in Ms. Brown's high school criminal justice class, explaining the different laws and driving under the influence... class, explaining the different laws and driving under the influence of intoxicants and DUI stuff, procedures. We had one of their kids go perform FSTs, field sobriety tests, and they had these goggles, drunk goggles, that they were wearing and stuff. So it was a pretty good experience for them. I've been working with the Vernonia Schools and the Rural Fire Protection District on this year's Stop Kids Impaired and Distracted Driving, the SCID program. And it's going to be on May 13th at Spencer Park. That's where life flight comes in, they stage a crash. Got pretty good variety of kids, some of the cool kids and some not so cool kids, you know, different classes, or different cliques. But it's pretty good. So it's been, it's been a few years since we've actually had that presentation done. So figured, you know, with the DUI class and Ms. Brown's class and then this, kind of sum it up a little bit. But both Officer Schultz and Officer Ratliff have completed basic certification requirements from Department of Public Safety and Standards and Training. So they're both received their certification. So, that's about all I got. Hopefully they stick around.
That's on the 13th, Sean?
It's on May 13th. I want to say it's like 10:30 or 11:00 in the morning.
Mine says 10.
10, okay.
Okay.
Any questions, Sergeant?
I like seeing them traffic stops.
So I just.
I know they're out there.
I can tell you, April was a little bit better. So, yeah.
So what's the digital evidence training? What, curious?
So like retracting evidence off of a phone, off of a computer, what we have to do as far as like writing search warrants, property evidence receipts, documenting a chain of custody, that kind of thing. So that's what the digital evidence is.
Sean, I'm up at the school every morning and afternoon. I see an overwhelming amount of kids under 16 without helmets. I've tried to help kids. I did help one boy get a helmet. I talked to the kids. I said, you know, you're, I ask them if they're 16. No, you need to wear a helmet. There's a lot of kids. And I noticed that ever since the skate park went in, there's a lot of kids riding around without helmets. And we used to have a program, I think the Lions Club helped out with it in conjunction with the district, and we bought helmets for the kids and had little Saturdays, you know, little out in the parking lot. Sure be nice to kind of work with the district again and maybe before the end of the school year, I'll even talk to Jim about it. Maybe we could get a program going again.
Well, what I can do is reach out to that company that we contracted for the bicycle rodeo stuff.
Okay, yeah, that's what I.
And see if they have helmets that they can donate.
Sure.
Then we can hand them out at the school. Catch them right there in the act.
Yeah. So. And there's a lot of kids riding their bikes on the sidewalks again, too.
Downtown?
Yeah.
Kind of hard with the construction, just saying.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's, yeah. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that up.
I'll put that on my list of things to do.
Yeah, thank you.
I would like to thank you, Sean. It seems like we're having an improvement over the stall we had for a while. So I'm glad to see everything that's happening.
Okay, well, thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
No ordinances and resolutions, I don't believe. Any correspondence? I did have one thing that I took away from the city county dinner over in St. Island on Tuesday night. And it, it's about, let's see, Molly, I met a gal named Molly. She's from the county. And they're pushing.
The BEAD, the BEAD program?
Well, it's the.
The structure?
It's the.
I think we're talking about the same thing, the countywide broadband.
Broadband issue.
So the state of Oregon got the 700 million.
Okay.
And then the different providers are putting in applications to serve, they chose the school district boundaries as what the bid areas would be in the different counties.
Yeah.
And I saw, I got the email you forwarded.
Yep.
The tricky thing is, is simultaneous with getting an ask for a letter of support for the RSG telecom application, I got an email from the League of Oregon Cities that said, be wary of doing a letter of support if that agency has not interacted with your city, because they've seen some cities have trouble with the agencies not realizing they're required to play, pay franchise fees and all the things to the city in which they're hooking in. And then I got a second application request from a different agency saying they're also applying for Columbia County. So I did call the woman who sent the email and said I had some questions prior to us formulating some sort of letter of support. I wanted to understand what, what all these things meant.
Good.
Because I have two people saying they're going to apply in Columbia County for the Vernonia School District Boundary, and then League of Oregon City saying, check in, who, do they know what you're going to require, and are they willing and understand those requirements? So I'm waiting to hear back from her. I didn't hear back from her today. But I had gotten your message and called her that next day after a message.
Yeah, she sent a template.
Yeah, they sent it, the rough draft.
Right.
Applicants had sent me their version of a support letter template. So I didn't want to do one or the other until I understand what it means for us to support. And I know they have so many, they have to get so many towns in the jurisdiction to buy into their application. So I needed to better understand why the county wanted RSG versus, I think it's In Sound was the second one I got, and just so I could better understand it.
Yeah, there was a May 12th deadline on.
Yeah. And with the template, that's, you know, we could easily bring it to you guys and you could approve something, should I understand better where, what that means for us to do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sure the district is going to probably support that with a letter, because Molly was telling me that there's over 300 kids that don't have broadband in our district.
Right.
That's, there are 325 people.
Yeah, because we don't have a line that goes anywhere out timber towards, so all the kids in that part of area of Vernonia are not connected, or they're connected by satellite or something less reliable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Joseph. Okay, city administrator report.
Okay, so my very first item is the old dump, which I said we're still waiting. And I did get a response. So the major points Ian Wanda shares, is the project still on track to go forward? He said, yes, the funds up to $100,000, as previously discussed, have been earmarked for Vernonia's project. They're behind, they had a major cyber attack on the DEQ system. So they were supposed to meet with key people this afternoon. This was on April 30th that he responded to me. And then someone got injured and they had to reschedule that meeting. So he's like, what is going on? That he's still working on the agreement that he'll, that I'll be bringing to you guys, that he wants the city and DEQ to have an agreement for this work that's going to be happening. And then he's going to, they changed who is the engineer. So we need, I need to re-up with, it used to be Ryan Lewis, now it's going to be Genevieve Purdue. And so I need to re-up with her and run through the project with her of whose ownership it is, that our dump's right next door, and give her all that detail. But they will let us know as soon as the developments happen. And told me to reach out anytime. So he wasn't ignoring us. They just kind of got hacked and then they're trying to catch up. This cabling for the docks has been completed, many thanks to Council Webb, Council Norman, Ed Toss, city staff Mitch Vaughn, and Tim McLeod for their efforts. I do have one little, one of the wheels is broken on the ramp, which we're looking in with Topper, how to get that replaced, so that the ramps kind of roll and one's not cattywampus. So the ADA project, the three week look ahead from Brown, as of the 4/29 meeting, was Grant Avenue, Washington Avenue, and then moving to State and East, which you can see all that happening. And you can see the saw cutting happening by Park Drive. There's, that was happening today. And then I'll be on their meeting tomorrow. We may pitch that they could have the opportunity to do a bypass for passenger traffic. When they get into the downtown, it's going to be very tight for them to, basically, there'd be no parking and all of that, which may slow them down a little. So I'm going to, it would be, we'd have to notify the truck traffic, which they've done to kind of avoid where they can void. But maybe for some of the tighter, just the four downtown blocks, when they get kind of by either past Adams, but then the next three blocks, that they might reroute people on the temporary down Maple to Adams and back, so that we can kind of not negatively affect and keep them going at the pace they're going. Because if they have a lot of tight traffic, they'll have to kind of slow when they're turning their excavator and such. So we don't want that. We also did talk about, there's a couple of Vernonia contractors that were interested in fill. I just said, let's make sure it's not dumped in the floodplain if they take any fill. I'm happy they'll take it, but let's make sure they're going to put it in the right place. And then they do still have the, all the events listed, the schedule for that. And kind of, that's why they're doing Spencer Park, because 4th of July jamboree, the heaviest, like, venue and people is going to be down there. So that's why they're doing those to kind of end that side of the street versus both sides. They'll come back and do the other side of the street, kind of avoiding the festival period, if that makes sense. Crack ceiling week was great. Machine was awesome. We're probably going to pitch in the budget to amend the budget for streets a little bit and put a second run of that machine and the material, and it cost around $4,000. And they pretty much got every road from Rock Creek on this side of town, except for Bridge, and except for a section of Cougar. But it's really going to make a difference in the longevity and kind of getting that water to where it needs to go into the storm system and not seeping in and freezing and breaking the asphalt crown there. The senior exercise path tomorrow, the piece of equipment's coming to cut the sod. We're going to be doing, cutting the, a six-foot wide path with the five elements that are going in. And then we're going to be putting road building fabric down, like as a weed barrier, and then playground chips as the walking surface. So that should be pretty matched with what's already there and be easy to maintain. And then I just have the upcoming, we have upcoming budget meetings for council and that we are closed Monday, the 26th, and observance with Memorial Day. And I am, city staff is doing part of the setup for Memorial Day. We do the tenant chairs, the podium, the refreshments, the maps and the program. And then the American Legion and Mayor Hobart are working on the speaker, a bagpiper, and the other elements of the event. And that's all I have. And finger crossed for the flyover. You're closer to the date.
Okay, any questions for the city administrator?
No.
Dale, you?
For.
Okay, thank you, Joseph. Any items from the mayor and consorts? Thanks again, Dale and Donald, for your work down at the lake. Those docks are staying in place with this high wind we've been having lately.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
The west one gonna need some adjusting. Its rollers are out on the grate on that. And we had that one right out on the edge.
Right. Just a matter of tightening up the cable.
We didn't make those weights heavy enough, because Mitch could pick them up by himself and lower them over the side. I thought it was going to be a two-man job for sure. I was hoping it wasn't going to hurt his back. I was just going, these two guys.
He didn't, he didn't, he didn't sink me.
Hit me up. But yeah, thanks. We had a good crew there. Donald, Council Norman was there, and Tim and Mitch. And it went pretty smooth, I thought.
Yes.
Took a little rigmarole with the west dock.
Yes.
No, it was west, it was dock.
Yeah.
That had a hiccup.
With the hinge.
Because of.
The ramp.
The ramp was supporting the dock and the wind. And then it, it's got that hinge point and it.
Slid up and got locked in the stuck position. And we adjusted the dock to that, then after.
We already did.
Had to readjust the dock.
Someone's like, wait.
Oh, no.
At an angle.
On his way out.
Oh, no.
But we got a problem. But yeah, I think that went pretty good. I think people are, people are definitely utilizing them after this last dump of fish. And I forget who I was talking to, maybe it was yesterday, where somebody was saying, he said, you know, it was really great you utilized the old docks. He says, they're getting a lot of use. And they are, you see a lot of people out there. So hopefully that generates some parking revenue coming in.
Hopefully.
And I know the camp hosts have been working hard on that. I walked through their, when I go down and check the pumps, and I walk the line, see how many are paid, and I see the red slips. And David said that it's getting better. He said.
People are realizing someone's paying attention. Yeah.
Yeah, we got to start paying again. So, because that's a significant, I mean, I think that one year we pulled close to 30 grand, I think, in parking fees on the lake. I think in the budget, we were only looking at about 22. So, but that was the COVID year when everybody was coming here to walk around the lake, even though we did wave the fishing. Got some bad news, though, on our forestry plan. I think the plan showed over 300 acres of forest land. Well, I've been writing up on the forestry plan, and finally I was like, something isn't right. And I started using the city's GIS mapping system, looking at the acreages, and if something's wrong, I text or email Ben, and yeah, he had something, he had some setting. He said, his quatorial setting or something on his computer, and it was like doubling the acres. But we do have more than I thought. I'm going to sit down with Ben on Wednesday morning, and we're going to firm up a couple of parcels that we actually got to draw the lines around and let the system calculate it and to put it into the documents down on McNair Forest and up on the cemetery property. And I did go up. I told Joseph, I don't know, and then Council Weller. And it's just, just take this a grain of salt, just preliminary numbers. And these are probably optimistic sided, I would say at this point. But I went up and did a hundred by hundred plot on the better timber up there in the cemetery plot. But if you were to extrapolate that out for the area, the whole area, there's probably over $1 million worth of timber standing up there right now. So sure not suggesting logging any of them, because I think in the next 15 years, you'd probably triple that number.
Yeah.
15, 20 years, it'd be worked a lot more. 15, 20 years, it'd be worked a lot more to the city. And again, we're going to go through the process of determining, you know, how the city is going to manage these timberlands into the future and how we're going to use those funds. Well, that'll all be future discussion, but it was, it was interesting to see. I had, I think, I had one that was 17 inch at breast height, I think was the biggest stem I had. I mean, they're all probably like 60 footers.
Oh, yeah.
And so, you know.
They're growing.
I think the average, I put it on an Excel spreadsheet and I think it averaged out at 11 inch diameter. So they're, yeah, they're taking off right now. So. And we'll get into the management on that. But anyhow, it's just, you know, I want to emphasize it, properly managed forest lands. And we've got, Dennis and I walked through some of that up there. You know, the stuff Pill did, I think, took real well. There was logging occurred before that. It was before 95. I think we were looking at the areas.
Yeah.
I can see where it looked like they scarified along the north line, but don't know what the planning and walking through there on that north line, it's a little sparse and the lower section, the density was, we were talking, I won't need to thin it because.
Thin.
It's doesn't, not enough density. But so anyhow, and then we get these other parcels into production, the dump and we probably need to talk about that in a future meeting, get that ball rolling. But anyhow, we'll have something more than we got now. And it's nice to see them trees growing up there. Money does grow on trees, folks.
Thank you, Dale. Just to remind, Angie sent out an email to all of us. She does have the budget for our review and she recommends that we get a copy before the 13th on Tuesday night. We meet at the senior center at 6:30 PM for our first budget meeting. So stop and get a copy and, and kind of review it. And if you have any questions, you could either email her or come in and talk to her if you have any questions. So just wanted to remind you on that in case you didn't get your email. So. I don't have anything else. I think Brown's doing a great job so far. Yeah, I mean, they've already got, what, three or four complete now and almost.
Yeah, they just have to do the gutter part.
What's the total number again?
I think it's 28.
Yeah, there's a bunch.
So one, two, three, four.
Here till late fall.
Yeah.
But we're not the only municipality. Okay, well, if nothing else from you guys, I'll have an exit item summary. Josette?
Okay, so I'm going to sign the audit contract and let them get started on this year's audit. I'm going to look into whether or not the fire hydrant on Knott Street is one of the ones slated or for replacement or removal and get back to Mr. Krimmon. And then Sergeant's going to check with the bike rodeo people about helmet donations and work with the district to see if we can't distribute some. Any, did I miss anything?
Okay. Well, thank you for all attending and I'll adjourn this meeting tonight at 7:25. Meeting adjourned.